I lost my space. Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to public laws 1975. Said notice was advertised in the Lacy Beacon and was posted on the bulletin board showing the time and place in the meeting. Will everyone please rise and salute the flag?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Item one, proclamation for an Eagle Scout. Jordan? How's it going?
Good.
Whereas the rank of Eagle Scout is one of the highest honors a member of the Boy Scouts of America can receive, and whereas only 4 percent of all Boy Scouts receive this honor, and whereas in the order for Jordan Rensel to receive this rank, he built a kiosk at the entryway of the Los Chial County Park in Barnegat, New Jersey. Did I pronounce that right?
Locky.
Locky, I don't know.
He was right.
We were guessing, it's 50/50. Whereas Jordan Rensel with the help of troop 56 donated approximately 160 hours to complete the project, and whereas his efforts have been cited by the President of the United States, the Governor of New Jersey, the State Senate, the General Assembly, and the Ocean County Board of Chosen Freeholders, and whereas the Mayor and Township Committee wish to commend and congratulate Jordan Rensel on receiving this high honor, and whereas the Mayor and Township Committee would like this accomplishment and dedication of this young individual to be an example for all those involved in scouting and thank him for a project well done, now therefore I, Stephen Kennas, Mayor of the Township of Lacy, on behalf of myself and the Township Committee, honor Jordan Rensel for his outstanding accomplishments and encourage other Scouts to follow his example. Congratulations.
Great honor. Here's over to you.
Jordan, you have to turn around so your mom can get a good picture.
If you want the mayor in it, he'll stand down.
I have one question for Mr. Devaney. Is he going to Alaska too?
No.
Any comments from the committee?
We'll just leave that where it is. I don't think he would have ever remembered that.
Pete, you going to go first?
Sure. Yeah, I'd like to comment. I think this board collectively, and you know, they say there's no I in team, and there's not when it comes to us up here either. We've all attended, either as civilians or elected people, the Soapbox Derby each year. Personal favor of mine, but to comment for Jordan to reach that level of Eagle Scout, if I'm not mistaken, 1 or 2 percent of Scouts ever get there. And it's an unbelievable honor. We've had so many from Lacy over the last just few years. I think it's a real testament to the strength of this, really, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, and the sense of community. It's something to be really proud of. And you're an example. You have great leadership in your pack. We're very, very proud of you. Part of the fiber and the fabric of traditional America. You should be applauded. Thank you.
Tim?
Jordan, let me congratulate you. I am the father of an Eagle Scout, and I know what you went through. And Mr. Devaney and I go back to Cub Scouts together with his oldest boy. I can't believe you're still a Scout, sir Paul. And all the trials and tribulations and the heartbreaks that you have gone through, the sweat that you have gone through, it really is, it's an unbelievable achievement. And I can tell you this, my boy is now 25 years old, and it's on his resume, and everybody he's ever interviewed with has always interviewed him because he has an Eagle Scout. So it'll follow you for the rest of your life. God bless you.
Nick?
Congratulations, Jordan, on all your achievements. I'm real proud of you as a Township Committee, and I'm sure the rest of us are, and congratulations on everything and all your future endeavors. Thank you.
Derek?
Jordan, you know, over the years I've been here, we've seen a lot of Scouts, you know, come through here and receive this award, and we say it over and over again that, you know, you and all the other gentlemen, the leaders of this community and other communities throughout the country, to accomplish what you accomplished is really, truly a great, you know, venture that you set out many years ago to do, and here you are tonight at the culmination of the whole thing, and you know, we are very, very proud of you. You know, I want to compliment you, your parents. The guy sitting next to you is probably Mr. Scout himself more than anybody we've ever had in this community. And when he made that comment about, "I'm almost done," I know he's not almost done, he's going to move up the ranks from what I've been told, and continue, and it's because of mentors, you know, like Paul and other people in the scouting organization, that have truly brought you through the ranks, and your success is solely because of yourself, but you had a lot of help along the way from Mom, Dad, and the different people that worked with you. Now it's become your obligation to help the younger kids and work them through the ranks and let them have that same success. But Tim said, you know, it's something that really will help you as you move forward in life, and I hope I'm around to see it because I'm sure at some point in time you're going to achieve very great things as you go over. So congratulations to you.
Again, Jordan, Scouts have great leadership qualities, I'm sure you possess them, and you're very goal-oriented, and hopefully that this, I know it's the end of sort of becoming an Eagle Scout, but you can use it as a launching pad to start another cycle of something else. So congratulations.
And to the rest of you three little guys sitting out there, we'll expect you to be in here one of these days. Good luck, he's off.
You guys can leave if you'd like.
Item?
This way.
Yep, that way.
Item two, posting of signs, Relay for Life kickoff February 6th.
Relay for Life is having a kickoff event. It will be on February 17th. They would like to put out the signs February 6th and 7th on that weekend in order for them to get the word out. Usually we allow one week in advance, they're asking for two weeks in advance to put the signs out, so I just need a motion to approve for the two weeks.
Move it.
All in favor?
Please, second.
Second.
Yeah, your second, okay.
Houston-Gilly Park Thompson Charitable Foundation 5K Race, October 8th, 2016.
Thompson Chiropractic has a charitable foundation, and they are a huge help to us during our 5K run, but they raise a lot of money through their foundation from a march of dimes, and they're looking, and also they have their own scholarship fund as well, they're looking to hold a 5K race in Gilly Park, very much the same footprint of what we do for municipal lines, on Saturday, October 8th, 2016. I have spoke with Jim Wyland, our Recreation Director, and there's no conflict, there's no reason why at this point we couldn't have the race held there, and he's on board with it, so he would just need approval for us to allow them to do it.
Motion?
Move it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
MS Coast to Coast Bike Ride, May 21st, 2016.
Right, this is the annual request from the MS Coast to Coast Bike Ride. Dave Most actually does ride in this race. Saturday, May 21st, they go, I believe, from Sandy Hook to Cape May, and they do go through a portion of Lacy Township, and they have provided the insurance certificate, and it's just pretty much a notification that they're coming through our town. They don't need any special assistance from the police or anything like that, so we just need a motion to allow them to proceed. They're actually going up through Western Boulevard, they have a rest stop at Cedar Creek School where they have lunch, the volunteers clean up, then they go to Lake Barnegat Drive north, they cross over Lacy Road, they stay on Lakeside Drive north to Taylor Lane to Kenneback to Route 9, then to Wells Mills Road.
Motion?
Move it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 2016-61, authorizing the convening of an executive session.
Resolution attached to Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, authorizing the convening of an executive session to discuss matters of personnel and anticipate attending litigation.
Motion?
Motion.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn?
Mayor Kennas.
Oh, Mayor Kennas, that's a surprise. I didn't know about you.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Little bit. Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to the public laws of 1975. Said notice was advertised in the Asbury Park Press and the Lacy Beacon and was posted on the bulletin board showing the time and place in the meeting. Will everyone please rise and salute the flag?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item one, second reading of ordinance 2016-01, setting salaries for the PBA and SOA.
Ordinance attached to Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, amending an ordinance entitled, "Ordinance of the Township of Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, fixing and determining the salaries, wages, and compensations of the officers and employees and members of the governing body of the township." This is for our police officers and our sergeants and lieutenants. This is for 2015, 16, 17, and 18. It was a 2 percent increase for 15, which was non-retroactive, which was about a $220,000 savings to the township. For 16, it was 2.5 in January, 2.2 percent in July, 2.5 in 17, and 2.5 in 18.
Motion? Oh, sorry. Being the second reading, any comments from the public?
Seeing no comments, close the floor. Nationally, close the floor. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion on yours.
Can I second?
Second.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes. Resolution 2016-62, appointing a Park Town Police Dispatcher Trainee.
Resolution attached to Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, authorizing the appointment of Julia M. Lonsdale as a part-time public safety telecommunicator trainee for the Township of Lacy Police Department. This is, we had a dispatcher retire at the end of 2015. This is a part-time trainee that will work 29 hours a week at $12.50 an hour.
Move it. Second.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes. Resolution 2016-63, appointing snow season laborers.
Resolution attached to Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, authorizing the employment of snow season laborers for the Department of Public Works. We have hired a few additional young student snow shovellers that hopefully won't have to help us out anymore because I'm hoping for no more snow this year, but it was Igor Donahue, Matthew Milton, and Michael Milton.
Move it. Second.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes. Resolution 2016-64, appointing a school crossing guard.
Resolution attached to Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, appointing a school crossing guard for the Township of Lacy. This is moving one of our substitute school crossing guards to a permanent position. It's part-time, 20 hours a week. We had a retirement at the end of last year, so Margaret Davis is going from substitute to permanent.
Move it. Second.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes. Resolution 2016-65, appointing snow season contractors.
Resolution attached to Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, authorizing the hiring of contractors for snow removal. These are the gentlemen that helped the Public Works Department this past event and will hopefully help us in future events for this year as well.
Move it. Second.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes. Resolution 2016-66, authorizing receipt of bids for field fertilization.
Resolution attached to Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, authorizing the receipt of bids for turf fertilization at various locations with the Township of Lacy. This is the field fertilization that we're going out to bid for for our parks and public facilities.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes. Resolution 2016-67, authorizing the execution of a grant application for the Municipal Alliance Program.
Resolution attached to Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, authorizing the execution of a grant agreement with the County of Ocean for the Municipal Alliance Program. This is for the next fiscal year, starting July 1st, 16 through June 30th of 17. We're seeking funds in the amount of $32,665.
Move it.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes. Resolution 2016-68, authorizing the execution of a grant application for the tourism grant.
Resolution attached to Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, authorizing the execution of a grant application with the County of Ocean for the Ocean County Tourism Grant. This is utilized for the Municipal Alliance 5K Run and the One Mile Fund Run that is held in August.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes. Resolution 2016-69, authorizing the release of a maintenance bond for the 2014 CDBG paving project.
Resolution attached to Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, authorizing the release of a maintenance bond posted by Johnson Baron for the Vaughn Avenue, Holmes Avenue Side Street paving project funded under the 2014 Community Development Block Grant Project. This is under recommendation of the municipal engineer.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes. Resolution 2016-70, authorizing the cancellation of taxes due to disabled veteran exemption.
Resolution attached to Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, authorizing the tax collector to cancel 2015 taxes due on a property granted the 100 percent disabled veterans exemption and refund the resulting credit balance. It's on block 834, Lot 7. The amount to be refunded is $5,133.23.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes. Resolution 2016-71, authorizing refund of deposit money.
Resolution attached to Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, authorizing refund of deposits held for the use of municipal facilities.
Move it. Second.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes. Resolution 2016-72, authorizing the payment of township bills.
Resolution attached to Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, authorizing the payment of township bills in the amount of $1,537,949.14.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes. Motion to approve parkas meeting minutes of January 14th, 2016.
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Abstain.
Motion to approve township meeting minutes of January 14th, 2016?
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Abstain.
Motion to approve raffle license applications for the Lacy Township Middle School, PTC, and the Rotary Club of Fork River.
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Add-ons? Yes, I have one resolution to add on. It's Resolution Number 73. It's a resolution attached to Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, appointing Paul D. Nicola to the Lacy Municipal Utilities Authorities, Alternate Number Two. Mr. D. Nicola's term expires January 31st of 16. The new appointment is from February 1st of 16 till, if you can believe this, January 31st of 2021 already we're talking.
Motion?
Move it. Second.
Was that you?
Yes.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor, Mr. Quinn?
Abstain.
And Mayor Kennas?
Yes. Comments from the committee? Mr. Curtolo?
Yes, Mayor. I'd like to talk about a couple things this evening. First, of course, be an event that's going to take place at Ocean County Mall tomorrow, Drug and Alcohol Awareness Event, offered by myself and the Ocean County Health Department. I'm pleased to announce that for the first year, I've reached out to Lacy Middle School. We're going to have students there from the Junior ADA Organization, which is the Association Against Drugs and Alcohol. We'll have plenty of police officers there, representatives from our township, as well as towns around the county. A very positive event, an event that's covered well by news media, and the take-home point of the event is to really have a positive first interaction with young people and our police force, and police forces around the county. And that does pay benefits. They say it's, you don't get a second chance to make a first impression. I believe that's the case, as we've seen here on occasion with our own police force in Denton Avenue and the middle school, when they do their outreach here as they have done in years past, that gymnasium is completely full with police officers and young kids that just can't wait to get their baseball card signed by police officers. A great time and a great event to be had by all of the commemorating our event tomorrow at 12 noon, Center Court, Ocean County Mall. I would like to also comment, recently our township has received AA+ bond rating, and I think that's a testament certainly not to me alone, but to our department heads who deserve the credit, our township administrator, our elected officials that have been on this board for a long time, certainly Mayor Quinn. What this does, with a good bond rating like any good credit rating does, we may have lost the most likely borrow money that we have to bond for to do critical projects around the town at a lower rate. And some of my comments were recently posted in the Lacy Reporter, and they're there for everyone to read. I think it's great news. I think it's emblematic of how this municipal government has been very effective with the budgeting process. In addition to that, our department heads, all of which deserve credit for going out and enthusiastically applying for and receiving grants at no cost to taxpayers. So I commend them, I commend them publicly and I commend them privately. We need, continue to need their support, and the residents of this town are well-served. I can assure everyone here that that's the case. My closing comment would be, for the first time with my colleagues on the governing body, we were able to take a tour of Oyster Creek Plant. It was very illuminating. The security in that plant was unlike any I've ever seen. I have toured years ago, I think 2005, Kennedy Space Center, and NASA was down there, and that security wasn't like the security at our plant. I think it's well-run. It was, again, not overuse the word, but it was illuminating, it was informative to meet the management at the plant and talk to some of the folks down there. It was very informative. I think it was well-served by our partners down there, and we're continuing to fill that void when they leave. And that'll be a slow and gradual process. We know how important it is to our taxpayers and our residents. We're working on it. We're meeting with people, with entities and groups. And I'll close my comments with that, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Curtolo, Mr. McDonald.
Sure. Last Friday night, the night before the storm, some of the committee members here, we got to attend the Bamber Fire Company induction, which is, I'm always impressed by the volunteers that come out and put their lives, but these guys, the firefighters, man, I tip my hat to those guys, they're unbelievable. The Lacy bond rating, that is outstanding news. Going to save this township some money down the road as we go forward, and I know that we're going to continue to work to get even higher ratings to save the township money down the road. And then I just want to congratulate the Public Works guys for what they did over the storm. I drove the township on Sunday afternoon, was very, very impressed. All the roads were clean, it was moving, and just an outstanding job by Casey Parker and his guys back there. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald, Mr. Juliano.
Thank you, Mayor. Also, as Tim just said, I'd like to thank Casey Parker and the crew. They did a great job on the roads. We got nothing but all kinds of emails. I got a lot of phone calls from people in town, happy they were that the roads were clear. He did an excellent job, him and his crew. And I want to commend Casey and all of the Department of Public Works. On the other note, I'd like to thank all of our EMSs, the fire departments in town, all of the people that do everything for us and make us what we are here in Lacy Township. I just want to thank them very much for all they do, and that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Juliano, Mr. Quinn.
Thanks, Mayor. Not to be repetitive, but the same as the other guys, you know, thanking Casey Parker and the PPW crew, and also the officers and the police chief for all the hours that they put in over the last couple of days with the major snowstorm that we had. They worked right through the night, two days in a row, complete 48 hours a day, they went above and beyond really doing what they had to do to make sure the residents were safe, the roads were clear, and that people could start getting back to normal on Monday. So Nikki's our liaison, and you know, certainly go back and let the department know on our behalf for the fantastic job they all did. Timmy had talked about the, one of you guys talked about the, Peter, about the power plant tour, and I just want to touch on that. I've been here a number of years, and I've been down there a couple times over the years, and last week when we were there, I have to say, I've never seen security to the level that we had to get through that day with the, starting at the front gate all the way through the entire process, and even during the time we were there, being, you know, followed and watched, you know, every step of the way. That plant is definitely safe as far as a security standpoint goes for the residents of this community. It was a great tour, it gave everybody a better insight what goes on down there. You know, we all saw, you know, the daily operation of different parts of the plant, and I think it really was a good thing for them to invite us down. We've always had a great partnership with the plant, and it was a nice thing for them to do, bringing us in, as well as, we had all of representatives from Congressman McCarthy's office with us that day also. So that was really nice that we were able to do that. I was very, you know, thankful I was able to attend it. The bond rating is something that, you know, like the guy said, really, truly over time is going to save us a lot of money, and, you know, we as a committee can take and give direction and do what we do in our positions up here, but, you know, hats off to Veronica and our CFO, Linda Cavella, because between the two of them, they really make things work on a daily basis, and they take and make sure that things are done right. This past year, we pulled back on a lot of spending that, you know, we had to pull back on so that we could plan for this, you know, 2016. They're on top of it every single day, and to get a AA+ rating really truly means a lot for municipalities. Not a lot of municipalities in the county that have that rating. So I think the town is running very well, our leadership is, you know, there, and with this committee and the leadership we have, I think it's going to be a good number of years ahead of us as we move forward. Mayor, I think you'll enjoy sitting in that seat and working with the two girls because that seat and working with the two girls, because they, they both do a fantastic job. Nikki touched on the ambulance squads and the fire departments the guys talked about, and certainly they're all, you know, they go above and beyond the volunteers, you know, constantly doing whatever they have to do to make sure that the people in this town get the services that they have to get. I just want to read a little letter that I got. This is from a resident in town, her name is Leah Lamantia, and it was sent to me by Mrs. Lamantia, kind of just thanking one of our ambulance squad members over at the Illinois Harbor Ambulance Squad, Matt Bender, who's one of our officers over there, and it reads, "Dear Matt, you're a wonderful human being. Your caring and medical knowledge helped save my life. I am forever grateful. It was touch and go in the ER. They called the code on me and brought me back with paddles. I had third stage of a heart block. A pacemaker was placed, and I'm doing absolutely great. You should be very proud. I can't remember the other man's name who was in the ambulance, he was a lifesaver also. If you know him, please tell him how grateful I am. Thank you for being so thoughtful. God bless you and your family and the squad, and signed by Leah Lamantia." This is just an example of the hard work that these men and women do. They're all volunteers, they all go out and do their job, there's no compensation for it, they put in many, many hours. And Matt, just coincidentally, Matt Bender and his wife Christine are both members, and they've been members for many, many years over there, and they, they truly do a great job. Not saying every one of those people do a great job, this is just an example of one of the letters that I just got recently. If you're, you live in a community and you have some free time, you want to get involved, you know, they're struggling to get new members, you know, it's, it's time-consuming, it takes up a lot of time, and it's truly something that you can do to help other people. So if you're interested, reach out to them, or just leave a message here in Town Hall, and I'll get back to you, and we can get people involved, but thank you to Matt, you know, for what he did. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Mrs. Quinn.
Yes, I just wanted to comment on the, the snowfall we had the other day. It was the first time I was involved in something of that magnitude. We had a real big meeting right here in Town Hall with all the department heads, there was representatives from the schools, representatives from the MUA, and the level of coordination was pretty impressive. Everybody got everybody's cell phone number and email address, so there's a lot of information being exchanged, and letting everybody know what to do and where to go. In addition to that, throughout that storm, I, I was surprised, actually, the number of phone calls I got from, from JCPN, the power plant, and the governor's office, just updating me on, on different things that they were doing, and, you know, the status of the power plant, the governor's office is calling if we needed any, you know, any assistance with anything, and in the power plant, or the JCPN was contacting me probably every three hours, just letting me know what was out in town, and what they were working on, and when to anticipate it going back online, so the, the amount of information available was pretty impressive. Also, the, on the power plant tour, I, it's, you know, we all, we all said it, the, the level of security there is, is incredible, and it's both a good and a bad thing. It's, it's impressive that, that, you know, the amount that, that is, that this type of security that they have there, I mean, they, they've gone over every contingency. Unfortunately, the, I can't help but think that the amount of money spent on there to, you know, for any problems is staggering. They spent a fortune over there just on security. But the power plant, they're, they're a great partner for us, and it's unfortunate that they're sort of being pushed out of town, so to speak, they're being forced to do things that they don't necessarily should have to do, but hopefully something, something else will come along and take its place, and that's all I have. Having said that, anything else from the public?
Barry Bender, East Dartmouth Avenue. Just wanted to talk about something that's coming up real soon. We have our Relay for Life Berkeley and Lacy, we're calling, well, this year the theme